Service Committee, December 19th, 2024.
Service Committee called to order at 6:00 PM. Members present, Steve Sherrick, Kevin Myers, Zion Hickman, I myself, Chris Moritz, Chair. This time I'd like to turn it over for public participation. If anybody has anything.
Greg Roy, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. I have a problem with Chapter 931. I have called, contacted Mr. Moritz this afternoon. A couple of people come up that does not want to face council or the mob and be put all over Facebook. Under Section 931.03, the rates and times of payments on Page 36 under Section B, 62 years of age of both parties to get a reduction in their trash bill. A person contacted me today and asked me that if they have a caretaker that lives with them that takes care of them, this does not apply to them because your ordinance says that it has to be both parties or how it's stated. Is this age discrimination? You know, the federal law says 55 is a protected class. The other thing, under that same section and same paragraph on 36, under the 100% disability, it states it's only for two years only. What happens after two years? Do they have to refile or is it a done deal? In talking to Chris this afternoon, I found out that the information that was put out to the public was incorrect. What is going on with incorrect information being given to the public? This is ridiculous. You know, the public is given 20, only 24 hours to read this stuff over, to digest it before you come to a committee meeting. Yet it's the wrong information. Once again, and this is not the first time, the second time or the third time. It's being repeated over and over again. This needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Anyone else, public participation?
Bob Taylor, 411 Plymouth. I don't really know what you guys got going on. I've tried to avoid your drama and your nonsense. But if I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna join in on it, okay? First, Kevin, why is it that your expected revenue is 5.3 million, but you have a budget for 5.3?
This is service, Rob. This is service.
Well, can I, so do I have to come up here every time and you're talking about something else?
If you're talking finances, you have to wait to finance.
Okay, so now we're gonna follow decorum, even though we know that you guys don't, right? Okay, that's fine.
Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes for December 4th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 4th, 2024 Regular Service Committee Meeting.
I'll second.
Have a first by Aaron Sherrick, second by Zion Hickman. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. We are going to table ERU. There's some work still needs to be done on numbers for that, so I do want to table that. Anybody have a problem with that? Also, as Mr. White stated, there are currently two versions that I found that are not correct, so that is also gonna be tabled. Nobody has a problem with that? Chapter nine?
Chapter nine, yes.
Hundreds.
Chris, is the one that we, as committee members, were sent to finalize?
Right, that was wrong also.
Oh, that's wrong?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, somebody forgot to be CC'd and two or three different versions have been circulating around. Nobody's on the same page, so gotta get everybody on the same page.
Anybody want to talk about any other projects? I see the airport commissions here. You guys wanna come up and talk about anything else on that or are you good on our open project end of it so far?
I think we'll talk about these.
Wait till finance? Okay. Any more public participation? Mr. Long?
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street. Once again, this is government at its finest. We've gotten 24-hour notice for this legislation that you're gonna present, or we're going to present, even though we've messed around with this thing for nine months and it was already finalized two weeks ago. You said yourself, and now the public doesn't get it until 24 hours ago so we can jam it down our throats? This is not how things are done.
Well, it's not getting jammed down our throats because we're not gonna do whatever table in it.
But your intent was?
The intent was to bring it in front of all of us and discuss it. We're not to that point yet.
But we're the public.
I know, but we're not to that point.
What's fair? What's a fair amount of time for us to look over anything this whole group puts together?
Well, we have to get it in front of the public first to be able to talk about it. And we haven't been to that point yet.
Is it 24 hours? Is that fair and reasonable?
No.
Okay, so what can we expect? When you finally get this thing dusted off and we all live long enough that there may be something for us to look at, what's a proper amount of time that we can expect? And yes, I'm putting you on the spot.
That depends on the public and us as committee members.
I was gonna say, if I can clarify some procedures, I think what Mr. Long is saying is he believed it was gonna be voted on tonight.
No.
It's not gonna be voted on tonight.
I already know that. I understand English pretty well.
Apparently not.
Yep, no, I.
Apparently not because we're looking at it as it's completed for the first time for discussions so it can come back to everybody else and the public can come and talk to them and we can actually read through it now that all the edits are done. And then we can figure out where to go from there, then vote on it as a committee, send it to council, go through the three readings at council, and then have it passed. There's no jamming anything down each other's throats.
Is that gonna be for the whole night?
What?
Everything that we're talking about the whole night till between now and midnight? Nothing's gonna get jammed down our throats?
Not in this committee.
Okay, oh, this committee, okay, I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, that's fine, all right. So, back to my question, what's the reasonable amount of time that the public can get this so we have time to digest it, so what comments we have, we can address?
I just thought he did it pretty eloquent already.
I didn't hear a date, I didn't hear a period.
There is no date.
When it gets to council, it'll be held to three readings, which means it's gonna be read three times, which means it's gonna be at least six weeks.
I understand that question.
But it has to get out of committee first.
Once it gets out of committee, does the public get to see it then? Or do we have to wait till that first committee, the first reading?
You gotta wait till the first reading.
Okay, thank you.
Any more public participation?
Hi, Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Ref 4. Looking at the open projects, how long has Title IX or Chapter IX been in some form on the open projects?
It's actually used in the last administration for open projects with some of the Title IX was on there, 900s was on there.
I thought I saw like 21, 22, right? Okay.
It's various times, yeah, in the last administration also.
So, and there's a lot documents on the man, you guys can look at it. So, really what I'm just trying to say is like, obviously not expedient, but let's not just be rude. You guys have literally have a crap pile of open projects that have been thrown at you, so thank you for at least putting in effort.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 6:09.
Economic Development Committee, December 19th, 2024.
I will call Economic Development Committee to order at 6:10 PM. Members present are Vicky DeShawn, Christopher Moritz, myself, Zion Hickman, Chair. Do you have any public participation for economic development?
Lisa Allseth, 1323 North Sandusky Avenue. I just wanna address you because I know that you're the head of the committee. Because budgeting's coming up and I already know, they're coming after the out-of-town tax credit. They're gonna have to, take it, I don't care, I'm tired of it. But who's doing what to bring some jobs to the community? And please don't tell me the Crawford Partnership. Is someone in this administration physically trying to attract jobs to our community? Yeah, I'll take you, anybody.
I can answer that. A couple of meetings ago, I announced to everybody that the administration and I are working on together for a list and I'm gonna go start calling people.
Thank you. I think that's the problem, honestly, as far as finances go. They may not find, I don't know if they'll find enough people here to work. But I know that I've drove out of town for almost 30 years. He drives out of town to where I work, to work. What hit me the most was when they gave us our company bonus, I realized how much the city of Mansfield benefited from the bonuses that were handed to employees who left their city and went home. And I brought my money back here and spent my money here, but a lot of those people spent that money there. And to have a nice size, we've lost Swan, we've lost GE. I mean, you know, that's where Bruce came from and James and we need businesses, period. People need jobs and I don't have a problem with them giving people pay raises of 20 bucks an hour. I'm single, I live alone, 20 bucks an hour isn't very much money to live on. Not when you've bought groceries the way they are now, property taxes are gonna go up. It's hard, so I appreciate you taking the initiative and trying to get some jobs here. I think we have a good administration, I do. And I don't have any problems with council that's sitting here right now. Any of you? I just don't like the other stuff. It needs to stop and I'm on the fence about even running because I don't want to be where you people are sitting right now.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. Recently I was given a post that really upset me. The post was by Mr. Zion Hickman. And basically this post has something to do with the jobs that this lady was just talking about. As his post states, jobs have to come from the administration and the administration has to find them. And he goes on, talks about the wastewater treatment plant that's only gonna take three to four years of construction. According to the people up here that came from the engineering firm, it's probably gonna be 2031, 32 before we even get anything done. I don't know where you're getting three or four years. Then it goes on to say about the airport project has reached Phase 2, which means that all the acreage out the airport will be purchased within the next year, giving us hundreds of acres of industrial land no one else in Ohio has. If we can get a lift station put out there. It goes on to say, and this, I've never heard about this at all. This is the first time I've heard about this. It's never been mentioned in a committee, it's never been mentioned in council meetings. Second of all, further on this post, I have gotten four out of six of my grants pushed through by the administration. Where'd this come from? I've never heard about these either. Never in a committee and never in a council meeting has this ever been stated. Then it goes on to say that, you know, Chris is working on the law since the 60, which I will agree. Jim is working on zoning. Vicky is keeping the council in check during meetings. Mr. Kevin Myers is working on the police and fire equipment that will save us millions of past while that failed. Aaron has honestly been preoccupied with the daughter's festival activities and is really pushing nothing. It goes on to say Kurt got through the solar panel zoning and Carolyn has nothing under her belt. I kinda find this interesting. Then you go on to say Chris isn't agglomoting anybody. The Crawford County Partnership has not done anything for this city whatsoever. I have not seen any facts, no figures, no nothing pertaining to the city of Bisciris. I've asked you countless times, where are their numbers for the city of Bisciris? Only for the city of Bisciris, nothing else. I don't care about anybody else. I wanna know what's happening in our city and what they're doing for the money they're getting from this city out of the general fund. That's what I wanna know. I have a copy of it, trust me, it will be posted, I'll tell you that. I'm gonna have this posted because this I find to be nothing but dirty politics. Are you going behind people's backs and doing stuff again? Okay, you bring nothing to this council, you report nothing to council. You do say nothing in committee meetings about this stuff, yet you post it to somebody. Thank you.
Anybody else for?
May I say something? I apologize. Being one of the few people who were here prior to this council and this administration, I know a lot has been brought about the partnership and what they have done for the city. And though there's no particular numbers involved yet, I will say it was the work of Sarah Hurley that, and the information she brought to us to let us know that we would probably need that fourth clarifier at the new wastewater facility in order to bring more jobs to the community. If it wasn't for that, we would be stuck at a lower load level that we could have so factories wouldn't look at Bisciris as a likely candidate, at least not as much as a likely candidate. So, because I was the only one here, even though I'm not on this committee, I just thought I would address that.
Appreciate it. Any more public participation for economic development? Seeing none, move on to the approval of minutes from December 4th, 2024, Regular Economic Development Committee Meeting.
I move to accept the December 4th, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee Meeting Minutes.
I'll second that.
First, our motion by DeShawn, second mine by Moritz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, or aye, sorry, now it passes. Do we have any other open projects you wish to discuss at the year's end?
No.
I will probably be getting ahold of Sarah before New Year's, try to see if we can get anything on that. What was it? It was, trying to bring the townships together.
Oh, Jed and Seda.
Yeah, for Jed and Seda. See if we've made any traction on that. If not, I will probably end up moving, we will probably end up be moving past that if she doesn't find it, that it is going to go through or happen. Have any more public participation for economic development? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 6:19 PM.
Health and Safety Committee, December 19th, 2024.
I call the Health and Safety Committee Meeting to order at 6:21 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, C. Aaron Sherrick, James Me, and myself, Vicky DeShawn as Chair. First on the agenda is public participation. Anybody who wishes to speak to the committee, please come to the podium and state your name and your residential address and begin your talk.
Bob Taylor, 411 Plymouth. First, I have a question. Is this the committee that would influence or make legislation that would allow me to carry my firearm in this building? Or is that strictly the administration?
That's something we can look into.
If any committee, it would be this one.
So, I'm gonna ask you this. Why don't, why, why are we not allowed? Because I know what state law says, I mean, you can carry a weapon anywhere it's not a courthouse, anywhere it doesn't convene in court. And I'm shocked, nobody has sued you for violating the Second Amendment yet. And this is, I mean, I don't know, I don't know why, after some instance we've had. I mean, we had a guy shot at the sheriff's department and then he drove here and was knocking on the back door. And one of the dispatchers had to answer the door and she was unarmed when she answered it. Then you had a guy going out the front door that was attacked by dogs, I believe. And that was all, I mean, that all happened when Mr. Reiser was still mayor. All the squabbling and things we got going on up here with government, two things that government's supposed to do is protect their rights and counter money. And we are failing pretty bad at both of those. So if at some point in time down the road, we get through all this other stuff you got going on, which is important, don't get me wrong, maybe we should look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. I have a problem with taxi cab stuff and I'm gonna dispel what I believe to be true. Insurance requirements are for commercial, for liability insurance. The money that's in the legislation is a joke. I don't care who's in the insurance business, I don't care who you parade up here, insurance adjusters and all this other crap. But it's way too hot. I don't care what, million-dollar coverage is where the guy came up and talked and said, "It's killing me, I had to take a loan out." Okay, to provide services to the residents of this city, this is the biggest joke I have ever seen in my life, including the state under certain chap. I guess I'm gonna be interrupted every time I talk. So the insurance coverage in certain sections of the Ohio Administrative Code does not require taxi cabs to have commercial insurance. All they require is to have basically auto insurance coverage. Also, in certain sections of the Ohio Code, it says the insurance coverage required for this chapter shall apply to taxi cabs only during periods during which taxi cabs are performing transportation network company services. They're not. That's like Uber, Good Eats, all this other thing because they are done by the internet. Taxi cabs, unless they are done by the internet, do not have to comply to these rules and regulations. Okay? So, and in our talk, Mr. Law Director, we even brought up the suggestion about, should we regulate Ubers and all these other people that use their telephones to transport people, goods, and services within our community to have the same liability insurance coverage that you're requiring taxi cab drivers to have? I think this needs to be sent back. I think it needs to have more public participation. I think it needs to have more scrutiny done to it and I think the costs need to come down on this. Because basically, these people can't afford to get in there. Thank you.
Any more public participation?
Bob Taylor, 411 Plymouth Street. I'm more asking questions here, I think. Are you guys, the regulation that you passed, is it beyond what the state of Ohio requires for taxi cab drivers? Law Director, do you know?
I don't believe so.
Don't, do you know? I mean, I think that's a pretty yes or no question and I'm assuming you wrote the legislation, or am I wrong?
It was passed over years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, it was years ago, have you read it?
Yes.
Is it beyond what the state of Ohio requires? And if it is, why? Why would you, as a small community who's already struggling financially, why would you regulate more than what another government body's already doing? And anyone who knows me already, I'm all for less regulation. I think you guys oughta just get the hell out of our lives altogether. I mean, the whole system could crash, I'd be happy. But obviously that's not gonna happen yet. But if you're, I think you should look at the statute, what you got going on. If it's beyond what the state of Ohio is requiring, why are you handcuffing small business? I mean, you guys are driving, probably driving drunk people around, I would assume, most of the time. And we're gonna try to hinder that? Doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Kurt Fangio, 616 Prospect Street. I'm gonna echo the last two public participants. This taxi cab ordinance that the city of Bisciris has is excessive for the, especially the size of community we have. We're actually lucky to even have a taxi cab service or to operating in the size of a city. It's, the answer is yes, it is more than what the state requirement is. And so why, if we're gonna start regulating insurance for any private business, what, you know, why? Well, what I'm saying, why are we picking on one certain type of business, a taxi cab? You know, we don't regulate insurance on other businesses, so why are we going after the taxi cab businesses? Do we regulate the insurance on tow truck companies in the city of Bisciris? I don't believe that we do, so why are we going after the taxi cabs? There's 4,000 homes in this community. We don't need a taxi cab ordinance that mandates a higher level of insurance than what the state requires. I don't know, but all I know is that this Bisciris ordinance is more than what the state requires and it's excessive. It's big government overreach and you just need to get rid of it, just get rid of the whole thing.
Without all the impassion and emotion to answer the question, it's $25,000 is the minimum. So, we don't need people to come up and act like experts unnecessarily. But I would just add that I surprisingly do also agree with the three before me that this is higher than what I would expect, to be fair. If I look at the regulations of Mansfield, Crestline, Gallion, Mayor Inn, Delaware, and I think Upper Sandusky, all of their city ordinances and regulations, the maximum that I saw between any of them, which I believe was Mansfield, was only 300,000 maximum. So I did just wanna add. So I did just wanna add that, that the, the amount that we had set, I do believe is quite a bit higher than what we would typically find as the status quo in this region. So, thank you.
Adrian Kembry, 725 South Spring Street. I don't know what the minimum is for commercial, but I do not believe it's 25,000. That is personal lines, and Mr. White said that you don't have to have commercial, you cannot have a personal auto policy, because you will be denied coverage. So if you have a personal auto policy with a 2550, and you have an accident, and your insurance adjuster finds out you're working as a taxi, it is specifically excluded. So it does not, it has to be commercial. So, thank you.
Any more public participation? Okay, seeing no one. Next on the agenda, we have, or I'll entertain a motion if the committee members have looked at the minutes for November 21st, 2024, minutes for December 2nd, 2024, and December 4th, 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve all of them collectively as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Myers, a second by Sherrick. Roll call, Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
And myself, DeShawn, yes. Next on the agenda is Bucyrus Codified Ordinance, Chapter 711, Peddlers and Solicitors Law. I know I've looked over the draft that the Law Director has prepared, and the reason that we initially had our peddler, or had our discussion on the peddlers and solicitors law was I had been contacted by some constituents who were concerned about the time that individuals were allowed to canvass, which were from 9:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night, Monday through Sunday. And the committee decided that we would have, we would change the time, being that you cannot canvas solicit prior to 9:00 in the morning or after 7:00 PM at night. And then we're also having it just Monday through Friday, no weekends. And then we also placed on here that you can also not solicit or canvass on a state or national holiday, or on a holiday normally recognized by the banking industry. That was the main purpose of discussing this particular chapter. The committee did ask the Law Director to also review the rest of the chapter, to see if, while he was addressing this one particular section, if there was anything else that needed cleaned up, which he has done minor cleanups. I do have a couple questions. One of your comments, it talks about that the Director of, well, let's see here, I guess it's page 1, 2, 3, and 4. It talks about the Director of Safety. And you state, "This is the first time the Service Safety Director is mentioned. This doesn't make much sense to me." And then another one is, "The Service Safety Director isn't the one issuing the permits in the first place, the police chief is." So I think possibly what you are maybe saying is that because it's the Police Department that handles issuing permits and what have you, that there's no involvement of the, there should be no involvement of the Service Safety Director, and that we change the Service Safety Director to mean the Police Department, or?
Well, that's a conversation you're gonna have to have with the police.
Okay.
As to whether or not they think that it should be them or the Service Safety Director.
All right.
However, there is conflict. I'm assuming that it was edited in years past, and, because that is the first time that the Service Safety Director shows up in that legislation.
Well, in this legislation, I was looking at it, all the dates are June 4th, 1996. So I'm wondering if it was a whole new piece that was done in 1996. I mean, every section, that's the, well now, excuse me, I stand corrected, in 97, they changed the penalty clause. So what you're suggesting is then, someone from the committee checked with the Police Department. Your thoughts, however, is that, well, I guess you're wanting, we'll check the Police Department, asking if they feel this is something they should be doing, or if this is something the Service Safety Director should be handling? All right.
And you should probably include the Service Safety Director in that conversation as well.
Okay. We can do that. And those were the only comments that I had. Other than that, like I say, the tweaks were, well, you did make a comment on applicant to file a bond, and your comment was, "Does anyone enforce this?" And this is where every applicant for a permit under this chapter shall file a surety bond to the city in the amount of $10,000.
Correct. My question is, is that being followed?
Okay. Again, check with the Service Safety Director or the Police Department. Okay, those were the questions I had. Does anybody else on the committee have any questions to the?
Not till we get those answered.
Is the committee themselves fine with the purpose of, again, talking about peddlers and solicitors, the change where we did the time, 9 to 7, Monday through Friday, and not on state or national holidays? Okay. Then we'll put this on hold for now, if the committee's fine with that. And is the committee okay if I check with the Police and the Service Safety Director, or does someone else want to do that, or? Okay, I can do that. Taxi cab licensing is next on the agenda. We will put that on hold. Mr. Barker was unable to come tonight. He did send an email to me and ask if I would read that. I think what I will do is hold his email. I did some checking with the Police Department today, because Mr. Barker had mentioned his concern that he believes there's another taxi cab service in town that is not following the insurance requirements. And the individual that I needed to speak with in the Police Department today was unavailable, and he will, I'm planning on talking with him on Monday, so we'll just put this matter on hold, and then we'll discuss it at our next committee meeting. Jim?
So I checked with State Farm, Bo at State Farm here in Bucyrus.
Okay.
And they refused to cover any taxi cabs whatsoever for no amount of money. I also checked with Brad at, and he represents auto owners, and they require a million, just the business themselves. If they're gonna cover a taxi cab, it'd be a million dollars.
Which is the figure that we have.
Which is the figure that we have.
And you said that was auto owners?
Auto owners, and that was Brad. Yep, he owns a business, and Bo is the manager of State Farm here in Bucyrus. Yep.
Any other discussion on? Mr. Goldberg?
Sure. Maybe everybody would like an attorney's perspective from why a million dollars is a good idea. So what we're actually quarreling about here is, I believe, Ohio Revised Code 3942.02. It's a little confusing. However, I do believe that the requirement is that taxi cabs just, I, the way I read it, and the way it's commonly read, is that it is a million dollars, and they require a million dollars in the industry, because there's really not that much left over to compensate people. I mean, in Ohio, you have a $250,000 cap on non-compensatory damages. So those are things that are like emotional distress, right? Actual compensatory damages are economic losses, medical bills, the cost of the car replacement, those kinds of things. You're transporting people, the van has the capacity to carry, what, three people?
A van?
Yeah, a van.
Five to six extra, other than the driver.
Well, the driver would be worker's comp, but.
But, so you have seven or eight people who fit in a, in a small.
I was gonna say, even if you just have three people in there, and they have a horrible car accident, like my dad, when he was delivering pizzas, some kid was driving way too fast and hit him, he, his car actually ended up in Randy's tire parking lot. The car caught on fire, he was, had a crushed sternum, all that stuff. You know, insurance, the guy's insurance took care of that, but there was still a lot left over, and that was even back in the day. They have to share, it's an aggregate million dollar policy. If you've got, typically, depending, but if you've got three people in there and they all have damages, there's a limited pot that the insurance will pay for. Otherwise, you have to go through the pockets of the business. And then if the business is set up as an LLC, and it's not an alter ego, well, that's it. It's only the assets within that LLC. You could only do, you can only take assets that are in that LLC. There's just not much left after the insurance policy is eaten up. That million dollars goes real quick in personal injury suits.
At the million dollar level, that's a combined single limit, so your property damage comes out of that, whereas in an auto policy, if it's, you know, like this, they're saying the state minimum of 25,000 per person, 50,000 per accident, 25,000 property damage, you've got three separate dollar amounts to go to three separate things.
That's a good point.
In the commercial policy on a million dollar, it's a combined single limit, so not only is the liability towards, you know, the people that are injured and so forth, but also the property damage is in that dollar, in that pot of money as well.
Now, I will clarify, because I got some legal scholars out there that are probably gonna mention that juries award tens of millions of dollars on a regular basis. Well, that's true, but the jury isn't allowed to know whether someone has insurance or not, let alone whether or not there's a limit to that insurance. They're allowed to award whatever they think is fair. And then through a process called remitter, after the jury is discharged, everything gets reduced down, if it's over the cap, to the maximum. So if somebody says, "Well, your non-economic losses are $10 million," and the jury awards that, it doesn't matter, they're just gonna drop it down to $250,000, because that's the, that's the cap in Ohio. So that's how that works.
Can I ask a question up there?
Sure.
Let me tell you, I am again, where I live.
Please.
Bob Taylor, 411 Plymouth Street. Now, I'm, I can't dispute what you said with how the law is written, and, and the hypothetical situations you threw out there. My question is this, the state already has regulation in place, correct, with limits? We're talking about insurance though, right? And what you're saying is, the City of Bucyrus is creating a regulation that's gonna keep the citizens safe that are getting a taxi, correct? Is that what you're telling us? I mean, that's kinda what I took it as.
Did you ask if some people getting in the taxi?
Yeah, yeah, you're, no, the drivers, the taxi cab has insurance, and your regulation is to keep the occupants safe? Is that, is that the angle you're coming from?
No, it's not safe, it only kicks in if they're injured.
Correct. So what business is it of local government? The state's already got it covered.
Now, that's not a question for me, that's a question for the committee.
Okay, well, well, I'm talking all of you?
That's a good question.
I don't understand, I don't understand.
That is a really good question.
At what point, the principle of this, of this government, what gives you the right to do that? And then we're talking about small government, something that's lost in America, and even on the lowest level of government, here we have a struggling city financially, you're looking at every little possible way you can to nickel and dime some small businesses. It doesn't make sense. And you can run around with the little, the legal limbo, what, all that, it doesn't, that doesn't matter. Sure, the hypothetical situation you just ran through, everybody understands the accidents, having people get hurt, people get sued. But the State of Ohio already has a regulation in place, and somehow, local government that's struggling thinks it's a good idea to make it more expensive for somebody. It, this, there's no common sense in that, man.
Okay, so again, if it's okay with the committee, we're gonna put the taxi cab licensing, insurance requirement on hold. Next on our agenda, we have the, well, it says it here, appointment of Floyd Farmer, Steve Pfeifer, and Ron Boers to the Property Maintenance Appeals Board. And I think basically what we're looking at here is reappointing Mr. Floyd Farmer, Mr. Ron Boers, and Mr. Steve Pfeifer to, each to a four-year term, to the Property Maintenance Appeals Board. Their term will begin January 1, 2025, and will end December 31, 2028. Now, can I assume, because this came from your report, I do believe, Mr. Goldberg, was it not, or were you?
No, it was my report.
Okay, that these individuals have been contacted and they are willing to?
Not to my knowledge.
Oh, okay.
I had contacted Alyssa to contact them and see how they felt about it. Alyssa's the Secretary of the Property Maintenance Appeals Board, so I haven't heard back from her as to if they're interested.
If that's the case, I'd like to table this until we hear back from those people.
Okay, then we're going to table this, since there's been no response heard back as to whether these three individuals wish to, either all three, or one, or two, wish to be reappointed. So we'll place that on hold, which then that'll make that necessary when we do prepare legislation to make it retroactive, I would assume.
Would have had to have been anyway, at this point. Well.
We're gonna pass, if, if, if we had done this, it would have been an emergency. Of course, I don't think, I don't, no, that wasn't even on our agenda for tonight for special counsel. So anyhow, we'll put this on hold as well. Are there any open projects that anybody on the committee wishes to discuss? Just a reminder that on the food trucks, at our January, or at our November 21st committee meeting, it was left that the Law Director, Service Safety Director, and the Mayor would get together, go over the draft edits done by the Law Director, and then get back with us. So the committee's just waiting for that. Same thing with marijuana dispensaries. At the November 21st meeting, we had requested that the Law Director prepare separate legislation drafts for each of the Chapters 704 and 705. And just for information purposes, you know, we're waiting for that. I mean, totally understand what all you have on your plate, not, not a problem, but again, I'm just pointing out for information. Feral cats, or basically animals and fowls. Back on November 21st, we, everybody asked Mr. Goldberg to go over Police Chief Ostenheimer's concerns and revise the draft ordinance with those concerns. And then also, I had emailed to you the Ohio Revised Code, Section 505.16, that needed to be added into that. So that's it for open projects. I mean, you know, an update of what we're waiting on. So again, nobody else had anything else on open projects to talk about, or any open project you wish to discuss? If not, we'll go to public participation again.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. So when are we gonna sit down and actually discuss the failed lobby for the police and fire equipment? When are we actually gonna do this? When are we actually gonna do this? Are we gonna keep on tabling it, tabling it, and tabling it?
That's not this committee.
Well, I thought it was under Health and Safety.
It's finance.
It's finance.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'll come back up. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Just a question. How much is it to refile for new legislation? Do we have a figure for that? Like, anytime you guys pass legislation, like a resolution or an ordinance, how much is it? So if it's already matching the state, it's presuming, so we're gonna nickel-and-dime us by spending $200 to remove it? Or is that what it's suggested? Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, that's, that's the question that's been presumed. But if it's the same, like, why, why don't you just keep it there? It's not doing anything?
I don't have a question.
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect. Is this right committee for the marijuana?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Marijuana?
Yes.
Stuff?
Yes.
So I had received a phone call, I believe it was last week, from a company out of Texas that was inquiring about, they were a consulting company gathering data for clients of theirs that were looking to invest in the marijuana dispensary-type businesses. And I, he was asking me questions, like, is your town, has your town banned the dispensaries? Or, you know, are you guys doing anything with dispensaries? And I, I, I said, "Well, it's kinda not, nothing's been done yet", but I got the, it, it sounded to me like he was trying to find towns that were favorable to those type of businesses coming in, and they were gonna present that data to their list of potential clients or whatever. So I know this has been in committee for a while, but I feel like if this committee keeps dragging its feet on it, we, we may possibly end up on a list somewhere that says this town doesn't really seem favorable to the marijuana. And I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for the marijuana or against the marijuana stuff, but there has been people come up in the past that seem very passionate about this issue and that they wanted that type of business to come into Bussiris, so...
May I ask you a question, Mr. Fankhauser? Did you say this was an email that you received?
No, it was just a phone call. It was like a cold phone call from this Texas consulting company. And what I told him was, there's nothing in our zoning prohibiting it right now, and they're currently talking about it. And I, I gave him Mike Keefe's number.
Okay.
So, but I, I think at this point...
How long ago was this phone conversation?
This was like last week.
Last week, okay.
And so, you know, I know it's like $250 to pass a piece of legislation. Have, can, excuse me?
I'm sorry, guys, it's getting really loud. This room echoes, and I don't care if you like what somebody's talking about or don't like it, they still have the floor.
If, if it costs $250 to pass a piece of legislation and you guys think you're leaning towards allowing the zoning, maybe it would be in the city's best interest to pass a resolution stating, and all it's gonna state is, "Yes, we are working towards something that allows these type of businesses". That would send a message to the consulting firms, which could then relay that to their clients that, "Hey, this is a community that may be favorable to allowing that type of business to come in." Otherwise, I think they're gonna start moving on to other towns and stuff.
Okay. Now, in response to your comment, $250, you're talking the advertising?
Yeah, yeah, just pass a resolution. It says, "This, this, you know, this is so-and-so town. We're, we recognize that these type of businesses are not allowed in Ohio, and, you know, we, as a city council, we wanna attract new businesses, and this type of business is something we want", and that's if that's what you want, but...
And my comment was just that the advertising costs for the caption of legislation, that is based on the number of words. I've already had an email to the Telegraph Forum when I was looking to see what a particular piece would cost to have published. And it was like, I think, maybe seven or eight lines, and that was gonna be like $62. So I just don't want us to throw around the figure $250 because you can't just say that. You, it's, it's based on the number of words. So I would just like that clarified, so...
Okay. Regardless of what it actually is, if it's up to $250, that $250 could potentially land you a business that comes into this community that may invest millions.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public participation? Seeing no one, um, oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
Do we have any draft legislation?
On the marijuana dispensaries?
The marijuana dispensaries.
Well, just as I gave my earlier updates on our open projects, on November 21st, the committee asked Mr. Goldberg to prepare drafts for chapters 704 and 705. Mr. Goldberg had prepared the traditional, which the committee all has had, and it was my understanding that the committee was fine, and we were now looking for him to put this in legislation form. So...
So can we put that on your list?
Put it on my list.
Awesome, it's there. You want a motion? Like to make a motion?
Yeah, we already did that on November 21st.
And if he wants it again, hey...
I was gonna say, it's not on my list, so add it back on my list.
No, it's not on your list?
I keep a, I keep a list.
Well, I'm telling you, I keep a list too. And I've got my notes. On 1121, you were asked to prepare.
All right, then it's already on my list. I will do it.
Thank you. All right. We will adjourn the Health and Safety Committee meeting at 6:57 PM.
Buildings Committee, December 19th, 2024.
I'm calling Public Lands and Buildings Order at 6:59 PM. Members President Zion Hickman, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Ciaran Scherich, Chair. Do we have any public participation for Public Lands and Buildings?
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect. It was referred to put sale of city properties on the agenda here. And the reason for that, I believe, was because, one, the money that we could get from selling city properties could potentially be used for our share of what we need for the airport commission grant. There's also, I believe, is the roof on City Hall need replaced? That needs replaced. Is there anything else you know of off the top of your head?
That's pretty good.
What was, do you got an idea on what the City Hall roof cost might be?
Kurt, just a second. Guys, can you quiet down, because that is really echoing up here, so I know that the mics are picking it up? Thank you.
It's like $430,000-ish.
Just for the roof on City Hall?
Yeah.
Okay, so the airport grant share was $300,000, but we had like 50 from a private business that said they was gonna donate, and that, that could be matched. So we could potentially get $100,000 of that $300,000, but we still have a $200,000 we gotta come up with there. The City Hall roof's $400,000, that's like $600-plus thousand. So the potential city properties we might be looking at are the, the two parking lots, North End Fire Station. It's also been mentioned about possibility of the Pines Reservoir. With the numbers, the, between this roof and the airport thing, I think you're gonna have to put all of those up. I don't think you're gonna be able to get by with just, you know, a couple of them. I think you're gonna have to put everything up. Now, what you could do is, you could stage it so that when the bids are open, certain ones are open first, so that potentially, if we get more than we thought we were gonna get off of certain ones, we may not have to tap into some of the other properties to sell. So like, for example, the Pines Reservoir could be the last, the last one opened up, but we might not have to tap into that if the other so many come in with enough money. So that was just a suggestion I had for the committee. The other thing I'd heard, Picking Park, I've heard there is actual, a private business interested in buying that directly adjacent to Picking Park, and there's actually drawn up building, building plans already for the expansion of the copper kettle. So you might wanna throw that in there. Those plans have actually been in the mayor's office. I've seen them. So, you know, I think there's like five properties there. There may be some more, like where the old water tower used to be and stuff like that. But at this point, with the city's revenues, I think, I think you're just gonna have to do it all, all of it. You know, might not have to sell all of it. You could still reject the bids once they come in, but just get the process rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Breathe it off, 210 Ethel Street. Chairman, Bussiris Trails Committee. You all created the Trail Committee because of the Pines, to keep the Pines, to open it up, so citizens of Bussiris could go out, enjoy the outdoors, walk the trails. And you're, you're sitting up here talking about selling it. Not one time, not one time have I ever been told, or has anyone on the Trails Committee been told, "I'm half afraid to go out there and work on the trails because there's talk of selling it". What the hell's going on? Kurt suggests that we sell it, and you all jump on board. Is that it?
No, Kurt suggested it.
Kurt suggested it.
All we're doing is hearing his words, and that's it. I do not back selling the Pines. I never have.
So Almighty Kurt suggests it, and...
That, that does not mean it's going out for sale. It means that he just suggested...
I hope you all have enough sense to not dismiss Almighty Kurt. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more public participation? All right, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the December 4th, 2024, Regular Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Hickman.
I'll second that.
With a second from Mr. Moritz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the motion passes. Now, next is the sale of public lands and city property. Do we have a list of all the properties that we have that we're looking at?
Do you have a list?
Because I was gonna say, there was a pretty extensive list. Do we still have the ones on like Woodlawn and, okay, that's what I thought. I know...
I can type that up and send it out there.
I, I know that, that I would really like a list. I know everybody else was asking for one. I know that there was interest in the one parking lot down by Wendy's. I know a lot of people are very happy with the use of the other parking lot because that we finally have a place to put those. But yeah, I know the, the North End Fire Station and all those other properties that are laying around on Woodlawn and things, people really wanted to know Woodall was out there still yet, so... Will that list be posted? Hopefully, as soon as they get it to us.
I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you so much. All right, and if you guys know of any other properties that may not have been looked at before that we have that are just, you know... Because I definitely don't wanna tap into our parks. I mean, Picking Park is not, nothing's paid for by the city. It's taken care of by the foundation. I don't even know if that, does that belong to us?
To Cl- may I speak?
Yes, please.
To clarify about the Picking Park, it's just a rendition that has surfaced by individuals with their intentions that they would like to expand Picking Copper Kettle. And I inquired about it, I heard about it. I had our engineering department get ahold of Richland County to try to find out what's going on. And the architect that is representing these individuals now has stated that he came up with a rendition of what they would like to do, but the next, the next order of business would be, for that property, would have to come to Public Lands and Buildings. They're the, the people that would like to do it. They have to let themselves be known, and they actually have to come to console. And that would be your decision, what you would like to do with that Quanis Park. So there's nothing, nothing out there that's finalized or even, there, there's no, there's no even, no plans even, so just a color rendition of some wishes.
Thank you.
When we get that list from the Service Safety Director, do you think it'd be proper to have any emergency Public Lands and Buildings meeting? Just to have certain ones just out of the way for the airport terminal building? Because I know that they're on a deadline too.
Right, they're on a deadline, but we already okayed a lot of it. Come on up, Mr. Myers.
Kevin Myers, 421, most of it. To Zion's point, maybe consider, I know there's a, a longer list coming, but for getting the airport project moving along and getting some money for the roof, the ones that were already just talked about, which would have been the two parking lots and the fire station, we already had dollar amounts and things. I think you could just go back and put those two up immediately, let them get the other list. I don't think you need to have a special meeting. You could do that then, the next, once you have the next meeting after you get there.
Do you remember, is it actually three, or is there more parcels there? Because they started for the parking lots. There was the two parking lots?
There were more, they're, they're two separate parcels. But the one, they're multiple pieces, but it was included as one.
Okay.
So you had, you had three separate sales. You had, you had the one that the dumpsters are on. You had the one that people think's an alley, and then you had the building.
Thank you, sir. And to Mr. Myers' point, it would probably be beneficial if we just brought those three different ones back out immediately. Would, would you guys want to stick with the same dollar amount? Was it, did all that look good before?
Yeah, I thought, I thought the dollar amount was fine. It was just that we decided to table it for now.
Right.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, so we're probably gonna need a motion?
Motion, bring, I'd like a motion, bring those three back up for sale.
Immediately as a mercy?
Immediately as a mercy, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Moritz and a second... Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Moretz and a second from Mr. Hickman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No, because we all just, sorry, that passed. All right, so if you could, sir, please help bring those three back up. The legislation had been written previously.
Okay.
It's just going to end up with new numbers, I guess, probably, so.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
I still have the council's.
So can you make sure to get those to him? Because I, I can't remember if that was right in the beginning of his, did it was brought up or dropped?
Who would have to change the number since we still have it?
Yeah, but, but it's all the same information, so. All right, do we have anything for open projects to speak about tonight?
Pretty much just did.
You pretty much just covered what I wanted to go over, so.
All right, do we have any more public participation?
Greg White, eleven twenty-five Hillcrest Drive. I'm appalled at you people putting up the North End Fire Station again. Okay, the fire department needs storage space, okay? You can't put some of that equipment in places that they don't have easy access to. Mr. Hickman pointed that out when he had the conversation with the fire chief and stated that, okay? They need this storage, okay? I personally believe, and what I believe to be true, that somebody's going to benefit from the sale of the North End Fire Station. And I think that if you're going to start putting up, sell of public lands, then I think you need to put that information on documents on demand so the public knows what properties are available to sell, so they can look at this.
Mr. White, it was already told that the, the list is going to be put up.
Okay.
Have you heard that about five minutes ago?
But the thing is, you guys are putting it back up for sale again. This is ridiculous. Mr. Hickman voted against it the last time, now he's agreeing to sell it again.
I can clarify that here in a minute.
Well, that's fine, I'll let you clarify it now so I don't have to sit back down so I can...
Just please hurry up, sir.
Well, this is, isn't this open discussion? Yes, it is.
I asked you to...
Follow the rules.
Are you done, sir?
I would like to hear from Mr. Hickman.
I asked you to finish speaking.
Okay. So if you're going to put all these parcels up for sale, I think that, you know, people are going, backtracking on what they're saying all the time. And I think that this is atrocity to the city and to the fire department for selling something that they need, okay? You got, you guys have, this council is probably going down as the worst council ever in the history of the city of Besiris.
Guys, you may not like what he's saying or you may agree with it, but either way, he has the right to be talking right now, thank you.
To continue on, if you're going to sell other, I think you need to look at other properties first before you go after the fire, oh, North End Fire Station first, okay? Thank you.
That, Mr. Chair, I would like to point out that you have Chief Schwimley in the audience.
We do, and right now we have Ms. DeSean.
You beat me to it.
Vicki DeSean, eleven oh eight Hillcrest Drive, Besiris. With permission from Fire Chief Schwimley, I just ask him, do you need the North End Fire Station building for storage? He said no, and that I could come up and state what his answer was. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna find it, Mr. Chair. To clarify to Greg's point, when I did say that it should be kept, at the time it was perceived that because we didn't buy the Y building, or we didn't go through with buying the Y building, that it was necessary for them to keep it. I met with the administration, I think, a week or a week and a half ago at this point, and they said that that building has been cleared out except for maybe one trailer? Was it the hazmat trailer?
The, the small decon trailers are still in there. They're still working on getting that out of there.
Yeah, so everything in that building has been cleared out, it's ready to go. And to Mrs. DeSean's point, if the fire chief says they don't need it at this point, it's not needed, so.
Thank you. Mr. Fankhouser, would you?
Do I gotta restate my address? I already stated it once. Six sixteen Prospect, Kirk Fankhouser. I forgot to mention one, another property, Crowder Road, there's, I believe, seven acres out there that the city owns, it's absolutely doing nothing. The city actually goes out there and mows the grass. I don't think they mow the whole thing, but maybe part of it. So you probably want to throw that one in too, because, you know, what, we've done nothing with it for like however long we've had it, so. And back to the pines, I actually think that the pines could be potentially developed by a developer and sold for lots for housing. And the unique situation with that is, we have sewer and water very close to the pines right now. So for a developer to come in, what you could do is, you could have a deed restriction on when you sell it, that says if it ever becomes contiguous to the city limits, it automatically would get annexed in, and then, you know, we could have a lot more housing out there that could potentially end up being in the city limits if... So, I mean, I, I haven't been to the pines, I, I know Mr. Thidoff has some trails out there and stuff, but at this point, I think what we need is housing desperately in this area, so.
Guys, please finish, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm going to finish right now because I, it's obvious I can't speak without certain people interrupting me back here.
Breathe that off, two ten Ethel Street. I think we should take the soccer fields and build houses, sell the soccer fields down on Lane Street and put some housing in. Thank you.
Kevin Myers, four twenty-one West Oak. Point out on the Crowder Road property, the purpose of talking about selling all this property is to raise some money to take care of other buildings and such. There's a deed restriction on that property that, for the dollar amount that it was worth when it was donated to us, and I can't recall what the numbers, but I think it's like seven thousand dollars or something total. We can't sell it for any more than that, if we do, then that difference has to be given back to the Shriners, so we can't profit off of that.
Thank you, sir.
Bob Taylor, four eleven Plymouth.
I just wanted to say, since we're talking about trails, whoever developed the trail, the new trail by the park did a great job, that's an awesome addition to the community, I run on that a few times, so.
Thank you. Do we have any more public participation? Saint None, I'm going to adjourn at seven seventeen PM.
Planning Committee, December 19th, 2024.
Planning Committee will come to order at 7:20. And members are Erin Scherik, Vicki DeSean, James B., Chair. Any public participation? No public participation for plating? Unblessed. Approval of amendments for December 4th, 2024, regular plating committee meeting?
Mr. Me, I would like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the December 4th, 2024, regular plating committee meeting.
Thank you. Erin, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Vicki seconds the motion. Roll call. Erin?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Pass. So now we got BCO 1189.03, general resurfacing, went to Planning Commission. And they recommended changes. And that comes under 1189.03, general resurfacing. And what?
It's C3.
Right. I was getting there. C3. And what originally read, "All single-family dwelling units shall have a minimum of a dustless stone parking area with a concrete apron surrounding said parking lot." So I seen it, I didn't really realize what it meant, but if you have a parking lot with 100 cars in it, it means that you have to have an apron around the whole parking lot of 100 cars to put your stones in, which doesn't make sense. So there, recommendation was, "All single-family dwelling units shall have a minimum a dustless stone parking area with concrete apron approach, providing access to said parking pursuant to the standard details for drive aprons on file with the engineering and zoning office." That was our change that the Planning Commission made. Now... Do I have a motion to accept the changes from the Planning Commission?
I'd make a motion to accept the changes from the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Second from Vicki. Roll call vote. Erin?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right.
Do we need anything else with that, or should we make a motion to send it to full counsel?
To... Legal question, do I do these individually to send them to full counsel because there's four pieces of legislation? Yes, ma'am?
But we're not going to go to counsel because we have to do a public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
You're throwing me off, Erin. Okay. I need a motion to set a public hearing? Erin's...
Made a motion.
Made a motion. Vicki?
Well, do we know what date?
Not yet.
Yeah, I have a proposed date if you want to give me one.
Okay, because I think you want to say what the date.
Yeah, Erin messed me up, so.
So the proposed date that I think that I can get a notice out the soonest and be at 30 days would be, February 12th would be when we could hold it. That's a Wednesday.
February 12th. So there's four pieces of legislation here. Do you want to have them, all four, that need the public hearing? Can we do all those at once?
That's what I had suggested at our last...
Okay.
That we do all four at one public hearing.
We have BCO 1189.03, general resurfacing, BCO 1193.01, solar panels, amending ORC to include ponds and 316 and 320 wood lawn. Can I have a motion to put those into public hearing? What?
I have a concern with the solar panels.
So should we go over them all first and then... But we'll keep that date.
Yeah, we have to. Okay, solar panels?
The concern that I have with the solar panels is that the draft legislation that's on documents on demand. If you'll remember back on December the 4th, I... We discussed amendments to be made to the draft that we had then. And those amendments were made that same night. But those amendments are not reflected in the draft that is on documents on demand in our council or in our committee packet. So I just want to make sure that number one, what was given to the Planning Commission to look at was the proper draft, which I will say that the amendments that needed to be done do not change the effect of the ordinance, but they need... They need to be in there. I mean, it's just...
It was the...
A proper explanation, yes.
We have the proper one, correct?
Well, I don't know if you do.
As well as any of the other... It was in the packet online.
And that's what I'm saying, that's not the proper one.
Is the wrong one give firefighters... Fire department final inspection? Then it's the right one, right?
Be... Okay.
It says on... On the last page, it says the following shall be subject to the final inspection by the fire department or their agents prior to approval.
And that's correct. However, at the December 4th committee meeting, I brought up that under Section 1, we needed to insert the verbiage, Section 1193.01 entitled "Solar Panels Under." That verbiage was not included. There was also the additional word of "to," T-O, to be included. Also, there were to be added the initials of the council clerk, the president of council, and the mayor. Those changes were done that night, but they're not reflected on this piece that's in our packet.
Oh, they're middle initials.
Do you have your laptop?
It's downstairs in our office. But if you want to take a recess, we can get that fixed.
Is there objection to a recess?
Does it have to go back to the Planning Commission with those small...
No.
Okay. I have no problem with the recess.
Vicki, you have a problem with the recess?
No, no, I don't. It's just, you know, we want to make sure because these, at least in the past, I don't know what's being done now, but when I was working for the law director, when you had a public hearing, these draft legislations were posted on the window of the zoning department so that the public could come up and see what pieces...
Bonnie, we're taking a break.
At what time?
Same time.
7:28.
Forty-eight.
Thank you.
Their concern or their list of sidewalks that they feel needs to be repaired or constructed. The public can bring their concerns to the administration. However, before the administration brings their concerns and/or the public's concerns of sidewalks, there needs to be this investigation done to make sure.
Okay, so I see what you're saying, and we can't do that.
We can't, okay?
The public has to be able to come to city council and tell them that the sidewalk is jacked up and they need it to be fixed.
Okay.
The home rule state, the home rule thing lets us tweak it, lets us have somebody other than the clerk be the one who sends out the notice and all that fun stuff. And we can even have the administration do their investigation and have all the data and stuff ready to go before they bring it here.
That's what she just said.
That's already in there. She wants the public to be able to go to the administration. The public has to be able to come to council.
So how does it get investigated prayer to?
If they're out and doing things and a worker says, hey, this sidewalk's jacked up, that's just employees reporting stuff to their boss.
So then if the public came to a council meeting and said, I have a concern, this sidewalk needs to be repaired, then we refer that then to the administration for them
Correct.
to have an investigation done.
Correct, and it's circular because then-
But they need to come here, not directly to them.
Right, they need to come here. Now, the administration can find them on their own while they're out and about doing stuff.
Great, okay.
And when they do come here-
I think the public can come to us also.
Yes, it should, it should work both ways.
But I thought you just said that, but as long as they're allowed to come to us.
Correct. They have to be able to come to council.
Okay.
We can't tell them that they can't come to council.
Understand, okay, but if they choose to go to the administration directly, that's okay?
That's okay too.
All right, well, then with that being said-
Would we just put that wording at the bottom of that?
I don't think there's any need to change it.
No, I, in my, well, let's see.
The press and ordinance that's been on the books for many, many years, the public always came to council in the past.
Okay, then, but look under A. I'm wondering about that last sentence that says, upon receipt of information, this is, you know, when the administration or the member of the public brings to the attention of council existing sidewalks that need to be repaired. It says, upon receipt of information, the city council may refer the matter to the appropriate committee. Well, under B, we say, prior to the city of Ussaras administration bringing a sidewalk that is in need of being repaired, dah dah dah, to the attention of council, the administration shall first have caused an investigation into said sidewalk and make the findings known to council with the referral of said sidewalk to the appropriate, couldn't we add to the appropriate committee in line or in B and strike out upon receipt of the information in A? Because we're not going to refer it to committee until the administration has come to council and said, here is our list of streets that we feel need to be repaired or constructed. Then at that time, that list then is referred to the proper committee, and then the committee decides if, you know, we're going to do a resolution and we request a resolution and then council votes on, yes, we agree these streets need to be repaired, and then the council clerk sends her notice to the property owners or what have you and say, hey, this needs to be repaired, you have so many days, whatever. I'm rattling. Am I going too fast?
I have a question. They can still just call the mayor's office, right? I mean, because some people are just too intimidated.
Yeah, that, that's still an option, but we can't say that they can't come to council.
Yeah.
Yeah. As for what Vicki's saying, yeah, I think we can make that work.
That's just my suggestion. If you feel what you have is fine and the rest of the committee, I'm fine. I'm just-
Well, I suppose it has to go to a vote then.
Aaron, how do you feel about it?
I definitely think that it's, the wording is off.
You think the wording is off?
Yeah, like the upon receipt of information, the city council may refer, just the city council may refer, it doesn't need to say upon the receipt of information. But it, for A then, if that's worded the way it is at the top, the city council may refer the matter to the appropriate committee or space for investigation or person for investigation because before it goes to committee, it should definitely be checked out. Because we had already had that conversation that it'd be necessary, which was part of the thing that I didn't see in there.
Mr. Goldberg, do you understand what they're saying?
I do understand what they're saying.
Okay, could you work on that for us?
Sure can.
That'd be awesome.
It's on the list.
It's a long.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, that was under open projects, so any more open projects you guys want to discuss? Vicki?
No.
Okay, we're good. Public participation. Seeing none, meeting adjourned at 7:45.
Director, a substantial raise. Now, I'm not saying any of you are or are not deserving of the raise and for the job you do and for dealing with people like me, but I'm telling you, you don't have the money. The taxpayers don't have the money. And it's pretty irresponsible to do what you're doing, like Kurt said, and not ever bring in that line item up here to the public. Now, maybe you planned on it, but you're running out of time, bud. I mean, my math's probably as good as yours since you're 300,000 over. What, you got 10 days, 12 days before the end of the year? So, what's up with that? That is kind of odd. But I would ask you guys to kindly look at maybe cutting some costs. And I know you can't cut city workers who don't come out of this fund. Your math doesn't math, and it does not look good when we hear it out here. And the first time I heard it is some guy's YouTube channel, right? Now, I don't know if all the facts are in that. I don't care, other than it caused me to come here and ask you. That's the only reason I'm even here, is because the math doesn't add up. And then you start hearing about what I see as a very exorbitant raise, $4.25 an hour. That's a pretty exorbitant raise. Now, whether it's one person, two person, 10 people, it's still a big, that's a lot of money over the long haul. And is it dropping the bucket at the end of the year for the city, maybe? We'd like to see it. And that's, and again, back to the layoffs. It really doesn't seem fair to the police department that the rumors are, that the risk is on them to be laid off because you passed legislation that requires the fire department to have six. And that goes into a whole other mess, conversations you and I've had a few times with EMS and all that, right? So, I don't think you've done the city any favors with any of that. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Sure. I do want to address a couple of things before, I will continue with public participation, but a couple of things I want to address. First and foremost, we're going to do everything within our power to avoid layoffs. If it were to come to that, that legislation you're speaking of with the fire department manning absolutely is on the table to be gotten rid of.
Let me ask you this. Why don't you just do that now?
Has to be referred.
Okay.
So.
Because if you're willing to do it, and then we know it's coming down the road, just do it.
Absolutely.
Well, give them a flip service.
I will refer it at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. With that, do you have anything you want to add to this? Or you want to wait until public participation's over?
Well, I guess we're going to, I'll go ahead and read this now, I guess, to address this. And then during the budget, we will go through any 10,000 or over dollar changes. So it might be a long night, everybody. Sorry. I'll try to go through it quickly. So, historically, the budget has been passed as an emergency in December. Last year, we had one finance committee meeting before passing the budget, the same as this year. The 2023 budget was not passed until January 3 of 2023, with the finance committee meeting being held on December 30, 2022. Before this council, this was before this council or my time in office. And to be clear, I don't believe anyone was at fault there, but it can't hold up the operations of a city. I am giving this history to show that this year is not necessarily an outlier to be passing a budget as an emergency at this point of the year. As to why this budget is in our hands now, as opposed to the last meeting or prior, a lot has been at flux within the city currently. Two unions have been within, having negotiations with administration. There have been quite a few hiccups occurring along the way with the city's health care insurance. In fact, we have just settled on our broker this Monday. And we had just yesterday, for sure, decided we were going with Delta Dental and Delta Vision, I believe it's called, versus Cigna. So it's been very in flux. Both of these areas affect personal services with factors greatly affecting other areas of the budget. For instance, there's going to be an increase in the costs of health care for this year. Okay, well, then we need to make a decrease in capital outlay or materials and supplies. And if those are continuously happening all the way up till very recently, that's changing in the budget all the time. Normally, they're not continuing on this late in the year. We have been overspending revenues in the general fund since 2023's budget. We have had to give back pay to the fire department that year, as well as contend with raises that were awarded, increased overtime due to taking on ambulance services during COVID. In an effort to help keep staffing where it was, the city ran a 0.25% safety forces levy. But later in the year, police negotiated raises that took effect this year, which brought them on par with surrounding communities. Also, two officers who were being paid on a grant the last two years are now having to be paid out of the general fund and safety forces in 2025. What this boils down to is, we will make it through the year ending in 2024 in the general fund with about $600,000, when taking into account outstanding purchase orders. The ending of 2025 is projected to be more than 200,000, probably between 200,000 and 300,000. So something absolutely needs to change in 2025 so that the city can remain in the black by the end of the year 2026. Also, for the public's information, when comparing the budget in 2024 to 2025, in total, over, the budget in 2023 was $38,346,434.46. The budget this year, sorry, is $34,171, sorry, $34,171,729.57, which means we've actually cut $4 million in this budget versus the previous year. In the general fund alone, we've cut over 400,000 from the previous year. In conclusion, I don't want to make it seem like we're pushing through a budget because we're trying to sneak spending or increase anything, and the public wouldn't be aware of it. It's just been a lot of road bumps along the way this year with the new administration and with all the changes that have occurred. In conclusion, we have decreased spending significantly for the 2025 budget year. The problem is, we're still not within our revenues. So something truly does need to change, but I don't feel that prolonging the approval of this budget would help. And when we do move on to the budget, I will go through line items besides personal services. I will go through all the line items that have changed over $10,000. Okay?
Thanks. Did you have anything at this moment to add to that?
Yes. I would also just like to remind everybody that the budget is an administration thing. It's not something that's done by council. It's something that's approved by council. But council doesn't get it until the administration finishes it. And it can't get done until it gets done. And not to be disrespectful to anybody, but there's no requirements to be on city council, other than living here and being over the age of 18. The budget is done by professionals. We work very hard. We found all kinds of stuff to cut. Next year is about growth and finding more things to cut. We're in an okay position. And if we do things right in 2025, we'll be fine. But we need your cooperation. And I think that's pretty much all I got to say.
What do you mean? What do you mean by cooperation?
Hmm?
What do you mean by our cooperation? What do you mean by that?
Quit wasting our time.
Oh, we're wasting your time.
Explain it a little bit. We've had how many records requests in the last year?
Hold on.
Come on up to the podium.
Yeah, come on up to the podium.
Bob Taylor, 411 Plum Street. Now, sir, I'm not, I appreciate you not trying to be disrespectful. And I'm trying not to be disrespectful as well. But your position is an elected position, correct? Now, I know you were appointed.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. You are just, that's what you said. The statement you just made is a shining example of what's wrong with our government. We are wasting your time. That's what I'm hearing from you. Now, I've been here a couple of times this year, maybe. I don't believe anything I've said up here has been a waste of time. I've asked some questions. I don't, I don't know how that's wasting your time. You getting paid?
Yeah.
Are you being, I'm not. I could be, I could be out of my, hanging out with my granddaughter tonight. Instead, I came here to find out what's going on with the city's budget. And for you, as an elected official, to sit here and say, all these people that continue to go out of their way, to come here and be involved in their community and their city council is wasting your time, is a bit absurd, but you're entitled to your opinion.
Sure.
No.
Let me clarify. I just mean all the drama, all the he said, she said, all the, I want to fight.
I agree with you there, sir.
All that stuff.
Absolutely agree with you there.
That's what I mean, is wasting time.
Okay, okay. But I'm sorry for not understanding the context, because you were looking at me when you said it. But that's fine.
Nothing personal.
Well, that's my, it can be personal at one. It doesn't matter to me. But I still think, no matter what, whether you believe it's a waste of time or not, you, as an elected official, should sit there and shut your mouth and let the people that pay the bills in this building say what they need to say. And without telling them that they are wasting your time. And another thing that would help greatly is if you do come and say something, at least try to make it accurate, because we spend an awful lot of time listening to people who say just beyond the pale wrong things, that we then have to stop everything, figure out what's going on, and then say, okay, well, that wasn't right. This is right. Then things get confusing. Just do your research. That's a valid point.
Yeah.
But again, I'm going to refer you back to being an elected official, and that just comes with the territory. That's what you have to deal with as an elected official.
We're just asking for some cooperation is all.
I understand, but not everybody has time to jump on Google and the internet and your demand, documents on demand. But guess what? We're spending 12 hours a day driving to work, working and coming back to work and take care of our families, too. Because if you ain't noticed, there's a bunch of us that work out of town. So we don't, when you want me to get on documents on demand, 23, coming back from work after being out in the mud all day? That's disrespectful there.
You concluded at the moment, Robert?
I'm not done.
Okay. Mr. White?
Craig White, 1125 Hill Chris Drive. There's everything wrong about this committee. There is nothing right at all. And Mr. Law Director, you want some facts? Okay. I'm ready to give you some facts. So according to this, the safety service director is going to get almost a $9,000 raise. Okay? That's fact. Two, the access telecommunications coordinator who got a raise effective 1-1 of 2024, got 44 cents per hour. Now, at the end of this year, she's going to get, or whoever it is, $4.25 more increase. So fact is, she's going to make $55,203.20. The mayor only makes $56,854.78. What in the heck is going on here? There's other, this is from all your facts. All these people, you know, even the council clerk was getting a $5.25 an hour raise. With that, she's going to make $52,520. Now, if you guys lower it to 425, she's still going to make $50,000 a year for being the council clerk. That's outrageous. That is totally outrageous. Plus, we have to pay 85% of every employee's insurance, correct? Plus, we have to pay their PERS claims, their retirement system. What is that all going to cost per individual employee with this 425 an hour raise? Plus, it's my understanding, and the auditor can correct me, with this new insurance, people, the city is going to pay different amounts for each individual person depending on the situation. Am I correct or not?
No, for that, we'll still be paying the same. It's, I think Vicki might have been wanting to ask questions about the health care, maybe later. So I can explain it now. So there's going to be, because we're in a situation where we were exiting a consortium when we changed insurance, and quickly, a consortium is where a bunch of cities go together to bring down the rates for the city. Because we're exiting a consortium, any bill, health care bill, that will not be billed, that occurred in the 2024 year, but will not be billed until the 2025 year, the city will be responsible for. So we have to pay it. So it won't be, they will be individuals' bills, but we will still break them down between all the funds like we would a regular health care payment.
But what's that going to cost the city? You have no idea yet, do you?
We, no.
You have a rough.
It depends. We don't know what health care claims are out there.
Right. The other question I have, too, and this was kind of interesting, too. Civil service, and this is fact, civil service commission clerk got over $1,100 raise. How many times do they meet per year? I mean, even the commissioners are paid. And they're going to make $1,978.80 a year now, under this new proposed 425. How many times a year do they meet? Does any other commission get paid? Does the airport commission get paid? Does any other commission get paid? No. Only the civil service commission. Why? Why are they being paid and no one else is being paid to be on a commission? That's ridiculous. That's a lot of money there. Three members there, 6,000 plus hers. That's almost $12,000 in revenue being spent on a civil service commission. This is just outlandish. And then we ought to talk about manpower and building that. So why aren't we hiring part-time people to supplement certain areas in our government? We hire them for the parks. Why don't we hire them for other sections? ODOT, they hire seasonal people, once in the winter, once in the summertime, to help pile roads, to help work on roads and stuff like this. Why aren't we looking at that? Mr. Law Director, I kind of agree with you on some points. Why doesn't the finance committee in this administration, or any administration, to appoint? Allow citizens come in and help find ways to save money. It's our tax dollars you're spending, okay? It's my property taxes. It's my taxes that I pay in income. And yes, I work out of town, too. All right? So yes, I have invested interest in this. But nowhere has anybody from this administration, or this council, or even this freaking committee, has asked for public participation to say, hey, where can we find ways to save money? I wanted to volunteer my time to come in and do that. I bet you I could find hundreds, I bet you I could find hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings. I'm sure there's other people in the community, too, could do that, too. However, you guys don't want our input. This chairman don't care. He just wants to run it right through. I found that out the other day. That's why I spoke when I spoke Tuesday night. There's going to be a special council meeting to pass this thing through without the public knowing anything. And I think that is not being transparent whatsoever. Not one iota. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Or may I have the floor?
You may.
Two things. I would like to correct a statement that Mr. Myers made. And I can understand with all that's going on, how we, you know, we're human. We can't keep everything straight. We're trying. But as far as the fire department staffing, the ordinance 12-2023, which is the mandatory sixth man on duty, that is in the health and safety committee. So there will be no need to, you know, refer it to committee. It's in our committee already. Secondly, in response to Mr. White's comment, these are the facts. You did not give the correct fact on the hourly pay for the council clerk. Yes, the legislation that was prepared did state $25.25 per hour. However, at Tuesday night's council meeting, which you were in attendance, Mr. White, I stated that there was an error in that figure, and that the $4.25 was added to the 2025 hourly rate that the council clerk would receive. So that's why this piece was referred back to our committee to correct that figure of 2525 to 2425. So I just want everyone to know that that's the fact. It's 2425 per hour.
Well, Mr. Senator, you must not have been listening to me, because I stated for the fact, the first one, at 525, and then I stated the second one at 425. It's on tape. You must not have been listening to me, because I said, at the 425 hour rate, she would still be making $50,000 per, over $50,000 per year. That's a $10,000 raise in the clerk's salary.
Then I apologize. I misunderstood when you said 425. I'm looking at the $4.25 per hour.
That's what I was looking at, ma'am. I specifically stated at 425.
Mr. White, excuse me.
Excuse me. I'm talking now.
And I said, excuse me.
Can we have a little decorum?
Okay, yes. So basically, she's still making over $50,000, okay? With all the inconsistencies, and I'm going to come back up and talk about those, about the council clerk's position, because stuff is not being done correctly. Things are being missed. I bet you the records aren't even up to date yet in clerk's office, under records retention laws. I don't think they are. But I'm going to come back up and ask. The other thing, too, these fine men and women back here that serve our police department are getting screwed over by this committee. I don't want to stand for that, okay? Whatsoever. You guys need to cancel this, table this for these raises for 425 for everybody else, until you guys can get your crapola together. Then you can come back and maybe give them a raise, okay? But you need to take care of these people back here, because they take care of us. And you know what? When you're going to need somebody, and there's only two officers on per shift, I have a concern about that with officer safety. Obviously, this committee has no regulation about that. They don't, you don't, people don't even care about that.
I do take exception to that comment.
Well, that's too bad. That's my constitutional right.
Please.
That's fine. It's my constitutional right, and I know you hate that.
I do, I never said I hated that.
Yeah, you did. You already told me once on tape.
Anything else?
So, so basically, I think you, this committee, needs to table this 425 for everybody else until this city can actually get their act together and figure out if they're going to have enough money or not to do that. And take care of these people back here who take care of us. Because I tell you what, when you people are going to come up with levies coming up next year that you want to file, and you want to come after the out-of-town tax credits and stuff like that, telling you what, you'll probably get a no vote again. Thank you.
Mr. Miss?
With 1,920 hours she puts in, you have $24.25. That's $46,560. It's not 50.
And she brings home half of that.
And taxes.
Yeah. And can I, can I get in here for a sec?
Yeah. I'm fine.
I guess there's some disconnect. When I was writing that legislation, is my understanding that the extra dollar was intended. The union signed off on it. I thought everybody was in agreement on that. I mean, at this point, it's not even really about the dollar. I mean, Miranda does a lot of good, hard work. And to put it bluntly, she has to deal with all of you, way more than I do. And I have to deal with you guys all the time.
Sorry.
It's not even about the dollar. I bet, and it's what, $2,050? I bet if I whipped out $2,000 bucks right now, it wouldn't make it go away, because it's not about the dollar. It's wildly disrespectful. It's just disrespectful. And I'm surprised she hasn't Todd Hilled out of here. And I don't want that to happen. I love working with Miranda. She is a phenomenal clerk.
And can I just say, too, that I take issue with what seems like that we were hitting the police force, who I respect greatly, against, in some way, a manpower clerk? Because I've spoken just recently with the police chief, and he was actually saying how well he thinks Miranda does, and how we're lucky to have her. And I don't think he would agree with some of the statements that were said today. Now, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but just from very recent conversations I've had. And I would also like to say, I think it was last month, there was a time when our website was down, right before people would have to go and make utility payments to possibly get their water shut off. And no one knew what was going on. No one knew how to fix it. Bonnie, who, love you, Bonnie, she had plans that night to be in Columbus, and she had had a doctor's appointment. So she came in briefly, but she had to leave.
$500.
And then, but Miranda, who is in, our council clerk, no way related to the internet, was able to go in there, call, get people on the phone, was talking with multiple people to get our website back up and running, so people could make their payments over that weekend, so they would not get their water possibly shut off. So she does a lot more than you necessarily get to see, I guess, behind the scenes.
Please.
Lisa, 1323, North Sandusky. I'm probably a little more positive. I would like to let council know, I voted no on the property tax levy, but I want to let you know why. My taxes went up, and I don't know how much. To this day, I still don't know how much. I can't vote for something in good conscience. I would like to have, but until I know what my initial increase is from the revow, I can't, I can't say, yeah, I can afford more, because more than what? More than how much? The police got a decent raise. She is important. I think people are stuck on the $4.25 an hour. I don't know. I, they have asked for help in cutting things down. I messaged a list to James, and to Bruce, and maybe even to Vicki, I think, of a list of costs. It does take a whole community. They didn't decide the raises. And Kevin was placed in that position by you, Kurt. You're the president who places people on committees. So you just kicked yourself. I just would like to see everybody work a little more together. There are cuts to be made. It looks like they made almost $4 million in cuts. That's a lot. Is there more that's going to have to be made? Yeah. I like that this administration doesn't put the police against the fire. That needed to stop. They all need a living wage. They were given raises. I think the guys are happy. We just have to find more cuts. And that's going to take people from the community with suggestions, not accusations.
Any other public participation?
Devin Wyerman, 500 B. Cyrus, or South Sandusky. It's my protected address. Probably going to get in trouble, because we're not supposed to come up here and talk, but I just want to say that we do appreciate Miranda, everything she does, everything you guys do in council, every city employee. We're out here doing the same stuff. You got guys digging trenches when the water mains break. As a city employee, I don't want to be pinned against any other city employee. We're a city together. We have to come back to that. Unfortunately, money causes problems. We get that. The fire department needs staff. We need staff. We are put in a very strange predicament when you have two officers for a city this size. I worked for Crestline PD. We had two guys running on a shift. I had a partner. We needed help, gallion, you know, the county came in. I remember riding as auxiliary here when there was four minimum on second shift. I remember riding as auxiliary here when there was four minimum on second shift, and even then they were, you know, humping the dog, trying to get stuff done, take calls, be proactive. As I said before, up here, we're a very proactive young department right now. We have a lot of retirements coming up. We've got testing for captain. We've got testing for lieutenants coming up. We've built the department from basically the ground up, restarting. I'm unit four. I started at unit 12. I've only been here going on four years. That's almost unheard of anywhere. You guys got a hard job. You have a lot of decisions you have to make that are going to upset some people, and I get that. I don't have the answer for you. I would just like, from the police department side, to let everybody know that we do support every single person that works for the city. We support all you guys. We appreciate what you do for us. And I would like to say that, yeah, we're suffering with two guys on the road. It sucks. We just had officers assaulted on a traffic stop last week. Nobody really knows what happens to us day to day because if it's not on Facebook, nobody knows about it. For our safety, my shooting, to bring that up, there was two guys working. If he would have took both of us out and continued on, who knows where he would have been or what he would have done. You know, so I don't, I don't have the answers. I know that we need staffing for the fire department, for us, city workers. It's all important stuff. So I just hope that you guys make the cuts where it doesn't take manpower at first, you know what I'm saying, to take guys off the road. If we're down to just two guys and a dispatcher, as we already are, and I think our chief made that decision to try to help with the budget, not because that's the minimum we need. Our minimum staffing is not what our minimum staffing should be, is what I'm trying to say. So if you guys can make cuts, that's great. Just hopefully not taking our young guys that we've begged to come here. We have actual people that want to apply here that have experience now, and that's, we fought to get that. And now those guys are looking other places, too, because we were going to put a test out, and now we can't, you know? And that's, it's really hard to, it seems like every time we get to where we need to be with that, something in the budget comes up, and we're up here talking about we don't have money and things like that, and it hits us pretty hard. So I just want to say I appreciate you, Miranda. I appreciate everybody up here, and hopefully we can come together. 2025, I would love to see the city prosper, get bigger. We do need housing. I talk to tons of people about that every day. We have homeless people out there who need housing, need jobs. We need, there's people I talk to on traffic stops, just passing through. Oh, it's a nice place. Just can't find any housing here. Like, there's nothing available. It's all real quick off the market. That should say something. Even with everything going on, houses sell really quickly here. You know? So people do want to be here. I want to be here. This whole group back here, we're young, we want to help, you know? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
I will echo that. Thank you for that. I will echo a sentiment there. You know, and I mentioned it earlier, and I'm going to say it again. We don't want to lay anybody off. And it's not lost on us to, if we laid somebody off, they're not going to sit out there and wait to get called back. They're going to go work somewhere else. We don't want to lose you guys. I hope you understand that. Thank you.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. First of all, I have said a sentiment a couple times, but I think that strong, intelligent women intimidate small, weak men, and that's been seen very apparent today. First of all, Miranda, you're one of maybe the most professional people that I have ever met. I was in crisis negotiation at a prison where I had men trying to stab other men, and I had to negotiate a knife out of their hand, and I think you were a better negotiator than any of my colleagues that I've ever seen. So for that, I thank you for being so professional in the face of a lot of different opinions. Second of all, Kaylee, and Kaylee and Miranda, I'm going to apologize to both of you on behalf of some of the audience members tonight because they're not big enough men to do it themselves. I am so sorry that someone would talk to you that way. Because I'm about to get, like, shaking mad, which I usually tear up when I do that, so I apologize. I had a conversation, which a lot of these arguments and opinions could be squashed if someone would actually call your office, which I know that you would more than happy talk to the public because you've more than happy to talk to me more than once. I know how much time and how many times things have changed in the last couple months, so I want to personally thank you and apologize for the behavior tonight on behalf of the men that won't do that because I really appreciate you, and I'm so mad right now. I'm so sorry. But so at first, I just want to say thank you, and I'm also sorry that they can't apparently be adults at 70 years old, I believe, and maintain some decorum. So, yes. Yeah, not a problem. So I will go ahead and finish on what I was going to say, and a lot of this echoes what has already been said tonight, so I apologize if there's a repeating. You guys have had all, we've had all year or two as public participants to bring ideas, so, you know, this is not a problem. We knew this back in January when the presentation was made. So first of all, I am disappointed but not surprised by Mr. Finkhauser's efforts to criticize his counsel, which he's supposed to lead. A true leader would not understand or would understand the roles of local government members instead of taking advantage of what citizens don't know. He is using a framing technique to mislead facts. Even intelligent, well-educated individuals can fall victim to manipulative tactics. He engages emotionally charged victim, I'm sorry. He engages emotionally charged wording and half-truths to push his narrative. I encourage everyone watching at home and here today to think for themselves and show Mr. Finkhauser that citizens are more informed than he believes. We could all sit here and list his deplorable.
Ms. Slater, I'm going to ask you to refrain from the personal attacks, please. In fact, he's not a member of this committee.
Correct. So let me move on. Most recently, a YouTube video was titled, "Is the 2025 City of Besires Budget Being Rammed Through by Finance Chair Kevin Myers?" This is categorized as a loaded question, and I'm bringing this up because it is relevant to the facts that is happening today. And I want to let people know that there's ways to find out if something is a loaded question, which gets brought up regularly during council meetings. Does it assume someone's guilty? A finger was pointed directly at Kevin Myers. Does it invoke emotional language, rammed, and suggests haphazardness? Does it carry a negative connotation? It blames Kevin Myers for the budget issues, and it leads to a conclusion. So with all that, I hope moving forward, we can look at these and see that, how this is framed. So based on, I'm going to move on from that and say that based of the fact finding and conversations I've had, as well as AFSCME union steward training that I've had in the past, I have some thoughts on this. It is insinuated that Ohio sunshine laws were violated by doing serial meetings at the, accusing the finance committee of talking to each other in separate small groups. colloquially, I've heard this called as a brown robin. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the summary of his take. He states that the open meeting acts have been broken, one or two of members having a discussion with the auditor, and then also a proposed budget via email. No decisions have been made, so there's no violations of the Open Meetings Act. There's times that Mr. Finkhauser has also not complied to that and has actively worked against the law director's opinion in not providing documentation. So I will move on on that because I don't want to do any personal attacks. You're welcome to read. Mrs. Ashan has also been a victim of this, and I just wanted to also say to Mrs. Ashan that I am sorry for the behavior of men out in the audience tonight who have also attacked you and treated you improperly. Yes, sir. While she did sue, we also should commend her for holding the city accountable rather than blame her. Her efforts most likely did save the city money. I know that sounds like a contradiction, considering the persistent disregard for the state law at the time. It also led to corrective action that set policies and procedures for meeting minutes, records, notices, and public records requests before that we had nothing of. As a law clerk, she maintained personal insights to the right documents, and a recording of a seven-year-old, or a seven-year-old recording that had misleading information and was basically cropped together was stems from probably most likely hurt feelings. Essentially, sorry, I'm cutting through here to not be inappropriate.
I would like to ask you to keep it pertinent to the finance committee.
Yes, I am. If anyone should be consulted regarding Ohio sunshine laws and the supposed actions of having serial meetings, it should be Mrs. Ashan, not Mr. Finkhauser. But back to the budget, to prepare for the 2025 budget, we must recognize the roles involved. Auditor Kaylee Lewis is currently our only trained official in budget management, and in small government, more than one, or one person wears many hats. She has been working long hours to budget our, to balance our budget, and she has kindly addressed the concerns from citizens when requested. Personally, has taken the time to address those concerns with me, and she's a dutiful public servant. She wants better for Besires and has made numerous personal sacrifices. Sorry, I'm so mad. Including turning down a new job opportunity. I don't see, I don't think I would do the same. She feels it's improper to leave the city when it relies on her assistance. From my understanding, issues arose late in, at last November or early December that significantly today delayed the budget submission to the finance committee, which was addressed. So, you know, the first was the insurance. We talked about that. I disagree with how the insurance is being handled. My husband works for Columbus City, and he has a higher premium and a huge, much bigger tax base than Besires. Our premiums are higher. Our co-pays are higher. There's no co-pays currently from what was proposed, and if that's changed, then so be it, but currently for medications, there's no co-pays. That's like unheard of. You can't get that with any other city. So I criticize and profoundly disagree with the administration's choices, but I believe in disrespectful disagreement. This is a fight for another day, one I plan to bring up again in the future. The AFSCME reopeners, comments I made are directly from my experience as union steward at AFSCME, OCSA, AFLCIO. The city has poorly handled union contracts in the past, and that has been, starting with not using a negotiation lawyer in some instances, it has led to bad favors for management and good favors for union, and that did happen, especially with the IAFF and FOP contracts. And so I understand why the AFSCME is needing the $4.50 universal pay raise, because if we have a budget, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we have a budget freeze, if we have a pay freeze, and AFSCME is significantly lower than the rest of the unions, that's unfavorable treatment towards AFSCME, and that can lead to a lawsuit, which is going to what? Then cause more money out of the city's pocket to fight a lawsuit for a new union contract, and then all the way at the end of the day, we're going to end up paying the $4.50, maybe even more, for the AFSCME union to be on par or have the same parity as the rest of the unions. Same thing with billet and manpower. It can be conceived as unfavorable treatment because they're not in a union. So I understand why everyone has to be equaled out. We can't go back and change the past. So I just feel like moving forward, I hope everyone can just work together. I'm disappointed with the manipulative tactics surrounding the 2025 budget. I mean, he basically, you know, basically, we have such a big turnout right now solely because someone went out and made a video to invoke emotional language and get people up here screaming at you, having our members of council, the finance committee in general, being treated inappropriately up here because of half-truths and lies. So long story short, I feel like we just need to stop using misleading tactics, stop using, I included some logical fallacies, so you could look out for them. Please just ask questions and talk to your council members. I mean, I don't know how many times I've come up here and talked, but I'm pretty sure most of you can say I've had literal hour conversations with each of you that have been 10 times longer than the times that I've been up here. So it's not just a show. It's like, just care about, if you care about your city, go and actually put in the work with your, your council members and your elected officials, ask them questions, and then you do end up in a brainstorming session, and you can actually help instead of attacking them. So that's all I have. I'm sorry I'm angry, and I appreciate everything you guys have done, and this is a part-time job, and you guys make $400 a month, and that's insane to me. So, but thank you for everything you've done.
Say something real quick. Okay. So to touch on what Ms. Slater just said, she's kind of playing my hand for me before the union negotiations start, but she is right. It's going to cause more problems down the road. That's the whole point when I said three weeks ago, two weeks ago or whatever, that it's going to help us when the contract comes due in 2025. It puts us in a pretty good bargaining position, and we're fine. We have to make changes in 2025, and I think we can do them. I think if we all work together and everything is done right and we thread the needle, we can fix it by the end of 2025, but if we can, we got to do a budget freeze. And doing it now while we can is going to put us in a much better bargaining position because then we can argue percents, not actual dollars. And the percents are just strictly to combat inflation. So like I said, do your homework before you come up. Thank you.
Kurt Finkhauser, 616 Prospect, just want to follow up. Since I'm the clerk's direct supervisor, I do want to publicly state that Miranda is, I've worked with three different clerks, and Miranda is by far the best out of all three, and I just want to come up here and publicly state that. Second, it was mentioned that delaying passage of the 2025 budget isn't going to accomplish anything. I disagree. I think that putting this budget out there and letting the public have a chance to review it for transparency is accomplishing something, okay? Now, does it have to be passed tonight? No. It can actually be passed as far in as the first week in January. It's been done in the past. The auditor actually just mentioned that a couple years ago it was done that way, okay? A lot of stuff's been said tonight, but there's really only thing that matters. One plus one equals two, and you guys are $300,000 short.
Any other public participation? All right, we're going to move on. The first topic on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from December 4th, 2024 regular finance committee meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve? I have a motion by Mr. Me and a second by Mr. Moritz. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Me.
Yes.
Mr. Moritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ashan.
Yes.
I mean, yes, that motion carries. Next up, you have the 2025 budget. And for clarity's sake, that, all the things that Auditor Lewis spoke of were emailed to the committee members on 12/11/24, and they had it for review. And so I'll open the floor. Mr. Me, do you have any questions, suggestions, comments, or otherwise?
I'm good. I've been through it all, so.
Mr. Moritz.
I'm good. I actually spent some time talking with Kaylee, too, and looking at this, so I'm good with what we have on here.
Mrs. Ashan.
I'm fine.
All right. I will also say that I'm fine with what I looked at. I will commend you as well as the administration for the cuts that they made. It's, it was very nice to see the higher dollar amount of cuts that were done, so. It's up to you, committee. I'll ask you.
May I just go through the lines that went over?
You may, yes. Yeah, I forgot. You said you wanted to do that.
You're fine. I just wanted to tell you, too, any salary lines that were affected by the manpower or the AFSCME, I increased those salary lines by 16.8%. And here's something to understand, too. Because of those rollout payments that we were, rollover payments we were talking about earlier, I had to increase the hospitalization in a lot of the funds by like, I believe it was 28.4% because we have to budget for the worst and then hope for the best, right? So it's very possible we won't use all those funds in the hospitalization lines, but they had to be in the budget. So that also increases the budget in ways we might not actually have to use those funds. So that would have been personal services, which aren't typically reflected here, and I'm pulling this from a sheet that administration uses when they, after we pass the budget. This is something that's typically made public. It could be, if you want to do an open records request for it, but this is typically so when, because when they get it, and when they get their detailed trial balance, when they see the budget, it's just a lump of money. So this helps organize it so they're not writing a purchase order for something and thinking, oh, we have a million dollars on this line, and then they're like, oh, crap. Sorry, shouldn't have said that word. And then they go, oh, we should have, we forgot that we have to write a million-dollar project out of that line or something. So this is just for their record-keeping so they don't overspend in the wrong areas, but it's helpful with the budget. So, and I also did want to mention, too, the whole reason there were, the whole reason there were initial emails that went out to finance committee that had included, and they all said draft 2025. they all said draft 2025 budget, draft expense budget worksheet initial, and then budget changes, and that last one was this. The reason that that exists is because I overshare information, I guess. If I have it, I wanna give it so everyone can look at it. Mr. Myers had asked for the expense budget worksheet because Ms. Schiffer had previously given it, Mrs. Schiffer, had previously given it to them every year. The issue with that is the difficulty is you have to export all the account lines from our software into an Excel spreadsheet, change every single line item you see in here by hand, and then re-upload it into the system in a way that has to correctly mirror the ordinance that we will pass to the penny so that it goes through audit correctly. So, on my computer, I have two screens, thanks to Mr. Finkhauser, and one I have the Excel spreadsheet on, and one I have the Microsoft Word, because we're really advanced here, on, and I go through and I auto-sum a million times, and then I check it with the legislation. So, by the time, so when I upload it, if it passes that way, the legislation's complete and accurate. So, because Mr. Myers asked for this expense budget worksheet, I had the budget as it would have stood if that passed exactly as wa- as is at the same time. So, I just sent the draft budget and the draft, or expense budget worksheet at the exact same time to Finance Committee because I overshare information. And then, like, if Ms. Deshaun, because she cares about legislation and its accuracy, um, if she wanted to go back and forth and compare, she can make sure that those amounts were correct down to the penny. So, that's why all that was added there. I could have saved the budget and not emailed it or anything as well. And then, when I emailed the other council members, as well as the council president on December 16th, in that email as well, the subject was the draft budget 2025 and the attachment set draft budget ordinance. All right, so now going through here, and I explained the personal services and the increases in salary lines and the hospitalization lines. Radio maintenance in the general fund is a grant that we received from the fire department for the Marx radio systems, and that is $13,303.74. So, it was an increase, but it wasn't actually, at least on this paper it is, but it actually wasn't any money that will come out of taxpayer money. Um, the clerk's hospitalization went up because, um, I don't think she would mind if I shared that. She got married, so she went from single to family insurance. Um, council clerk salary went up because she's paid fully from the general fund. A lot of the places in the general fund, you won't see the full increase because a lot of our manpower employees are split out of general fund as well as the other funds. And just so you guys know and are aware as well, by passing the manpower, it would increase the burden on the general fund only $43,388 and rounding up 31 cents. Okay. Theater demo local share, it went up in the budget. I actually just, um, budgeted the full amount of the funds that were in that fund, so if they went to build a ramp at the art park, because there's a lot of issues with the elevator, that money, all the money that is currently in that fund is there and available for them to spend. We don't have to bring it back inappropriate and pay for the legislation. We are doing new EDP equipment across the board because they're, correct me if I'm-
Could you clarify what EDP is for the public?
You know, that's a great-
Yeah.
-question, and I don't know the answer to.
Electronic data processing. Computer equipment.
Computer, I knew it was computer equipment, but I didn't know what the acronym was for. Now, Miranda, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason we're updating that is because there's a Windows update, Microsoft Windows update.
Essentially, uh, so, Microsoft is stopping the update of their services for Windows 10 and before, uh, effective October of 2025. So, that puts us basically at a security risk, essentially, um, not getting those updated security programs and updated, um, Windows browsers and such.
Okay. And so, what's happening is we're, we are budgeting to replace that equipment, but in a, in an attempt to save money, we're gonna see if the service director can go out and do like a bulk purchase with the company. That way, it will save us money, because in prior years, it'd be like, okay, I'll just buy a computer from Staples, I'll buy a computer from Amazon, I'll buy a computer. So, we are trying to effectively save money in creative ways. Um, we had a lot of cuts, that's gas, and there are some increases if you, because in 20, this year, under, with the recommendation from the state auditor's office for better budgeting practices, I believe I said in my auditor's report, they thought we should combine the police and fire and take their expenses from the general fund and put them solely in the safety forces fund, so it's easier to view. So, if you look, the budget will be increased, it will appear a lot in safety forces, but it's actually the combination of taking the money that used to be split between both the general fund and safety forces and increasing it there. So, let's see. For instance, gas and oil for police, uh, in the safety forces fund, it used to be $13,000. We combined the 20, or the general fund and the safety forces fund, all into the safety forces fund, so now it is $45,000. The amount didn't increase, it just moved from one fund to another. Um, civilian employee salary did increase for a 2.5% raise. The fire salaries did increase for, and once again, I'm budgeting for what I anticipate will happen. So, we increased it due to fire negotiations. I don't wanna give away our hands, so don't look, guys. Um, the- And the street department outside engineering went from $66,831.35 in 2024 to $175,000 in 2025. That is for a sidewalk project in 2026, and this is for engineering from Southern to Perry Street, um, and another small project, and then the street program engineering will be $100,000. Outside contracts went from, actually, that went down. Um, and streets, the street improvement line went up from $1,188,158.6 to $1,210,000. We are currently discussing removing a Beverly Drive project, so we would possibly be, um, decreasing the budget early next year to remove that project, which would save us And there are a lot of pages here, but most of the changes are that we are cutting. And the water distribution fund and outside contractors, in 2024, the outside contracts were $135,095. It is increasing to $207,000. Uh, that is for leak detection, $995 a year for BSI online back leak, um, $350 for Microsoft something, and I'm assuming these are subscriptions to Microsoft, 365, because it says $804.40 in brackets. Uh, there's also 100, $127,000 included in that for a leak that is currently happening or trying to get corrected. In lands and buildings, there is an increase in outside contracts from 2024 from $124,745 to $158,000. Um, that is for our contract to paint the water towers. You do it for like three years, and then they decrease. I believe, if I'm explaining that right, I have to double-check with Chad Slagle, and this is the last year, so it's our lower payment. It's $158,000, and that's the only thing budgeted in that line. Outside engineering and sewers and drains, we have the northeast engineering cost and south Sandusky engineering cost. That's $95,000 plus any other small outside engineering contracts we would have. Outside contracts went from $60,280 to $147,500. We are also discussing decreasing that line as well by $87,500 to remove that project. Under stormwater utility, under outside contractors, we were, in 2024, it was $112,295. That increased to $199,500. Um, that was also a project for $87,500 that we're talking about decreasing from this fund. They're the same project, it was split up of two funds. But, I mean, just to give you guys an example of the cuts, for stormwater improvements, last year, we had budgeted $1,607,571.71, and we cut that budget down to $100,000, so over $1.5 million cut there. Um, stormwater interceptor, that was cut. Um, yeah, and that's it. Those are all the major changes within the budget that were brought to us by department heads to administration, and we had discussions with them.
Mr. Me. Any questions? Mr. Moritz. Mrs. Deshaun. All right, it's up to you, committee. What do you wanna do? So, your motion would be to request emergency legislation?
Emergency legislation.
Passing the 2025 budget. I have a motion by Mr. Me, a second. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Me and a second by Mr. Moritz. Any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Me.
Yes.
Mr. Moritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Deshaun.
No.
I'm a yes. Three to one. All right. Year-end appropriations, transfers, and reductions of appropriations. Ms. Lewis.
For the decrease of appropriations piece for December 19th, 2024, and this is to bring us in line with revenues, program, uh, in general fund program, seven general government, department 7780 is 7781, general government, under item line 27, transfers, deducting $600,000. In fund 261, WSRLA Nevada Water Line, under program 7535 Sewage Disposal, underlying 25, capital outlay, deducting $107,877.20. In fund 264, the FEMA 2023 539 North Lane Street Fund, under program 7780, general government, item line 28, other uses, deducting $14,183.85. Under fund 280, the Airport Grant, program 7620 Airport, line item 25, capital outlay, deducting $155,000. Under fund 402, OPWC Nevada Water Line, program 7525 Water Distribution, item line 25, capital outlay, deducting $130,000. And fund 403, H2 Ohio Grant, Nevada Water Line, program 7525 Waterworks Distribution, item line 25, capital outlay, deducting $800,000. And in fund 404, ODNR O'Miller Walking Path, program 7770 Lands and Buildings, item number 23, Contractual Services, deducting $50,000, and item line 25, capital outlay, deducting $382,000. Under fund 409, OPWC Dudley Street Reconstruction Sewer Separation, under program 7610 Street CM and R, and item line 25, capital outlay, deducting $62,000. Program 7540 Sewers and Drains, item line 25, capital outlay, deducting $62,000. Program 7545 Storm Water, capital, uh, line item 25, capital outlay, 60, deducting $61,000. Sorry, my mouse getting dry. Under fund 417, Wastewater Plant Construction, program 7535 Sewage Disposal, item line 25, capital outlay, deducting $2,000, $2,339,640.45. Under fund 430, Fire Levy, program 7115 Fire Department, item line 25, capital outlay, deducting $70. And fund 701 Waterworks, program 7520 Waterworks Administration, item line 21, Personal Services, deducting $40,000. Program 7525 Distribution, item line 23, Contractual Services, deducting $30,000. Item line 24, Materials and Supplies, deducting $55,000. Item line 25, Capital Outlay, deducting $1,374,143.38. Program 7910 Debt Retirement, item line transfers 27, deducting $50,000. And that's it for the reductions.
All right. If I could interrupt you briefly, I will entertain a motion requesting emergency legislation for the year-end reductions of appropriations.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Me and a second by Mr. Moritz. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Me.
Yes.
Mr. Moritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Deshaun.
Yes.
I mean, yes, that motion carries. You may continue, auditor.
As for appropriations for December 19th, 2024, for year-end, under general fund, program one, securities of persons and property, under program 7120 Street Lighting, and item line 23, Contractual Services, increasing the line by $17,000. Under general fund, program seven, general government, under program 7710 Mayor, item line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $8,500. Under program 7712 Administration, item line 99, refunds, increasing at $10,000. Under program 7715 and 7716 Auditor and capital, sorry, item line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $2,000. Under program 7725, 7726, 7727, and 7728 Law Director, under item line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $6,000. Under program 7730 Service Director, item line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $500. Under program 7745 and 7746 Civil Service, item line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $300. Under program 7780, 7781, General Government, under item line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $3,000. And fund 264, FEMA 20- In Fund 264, FEMA 2023 539 North Lane Street. Under Program 7780, General Government, Item Line 23, Contractual Services, increasing at $14,183.85. Under Fund 266, ARPA 2022 Ohio Criminal Justice Fund, Program 7110 and 7111 Police Department. Item Line 21, Personal Services, increasing the line $2,702.50. Under Fund 281, 2024 Ohio Victims, Ohio Crime Victims Assistant Grant, under Program 7111 Police Department. And Item Line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $2,396.33. Under the 701 Waterworks Fund, under Program 7522 Filtration. Under Item Line 21, Personal Services, increasing at 21, sorry, 20,000. Under Item Line 24, Materials and Supplies, increasing at 15,000. And Program 7525 Distribution, Item Line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $30,000. In Fund 720 Sewage Disposal, Program 7535 Sewage Disposal Operations and Maintenance. Item Line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $20,000. Program 7540 Sewers and Drains, Item Line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $25,000. In Fund 750 Solid Waste Management, Program 7515 Solid Waste. Item Line 21, Personal Services, increasing at $15,000. And in Fund 760 Stormwater Utility, under Program 7910 Debt Retirement. Item Line 26 Debt Retirement, increasing at $3,000.
All right, I will entertain a motion requesting emergency legislation for the year-end appropriations. I'll make a motion for year-end emergency legislation for that. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Moritz, and a second by Mr. Me. Is there any discussion? If not, do a roll call, Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschaux?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Anything else at this moment, auditorless?
No, I don't believe so.
All right. Next, we have Manpower and Billit, and we had requested draft legislation. You have that before you. I don't know if you have any questions or discussion, or if you want to request the legislation. Mr. Me, any questions? Mr. Moritz?
No.
Mrs. Deschaux?
No.
All right, I would entertain a motion requesting emergency legislation for both. Do we need to do them separately?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll start with the manpower ordinance?
Request legislation to pass the manpower ordinance.
Does it emergency or not?
As emergency?
Yes, sir.
As an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Moritz, and a second by Mr. Me. Any discussion? If not, do a roll call, Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschaux?
No.
I'm a yes. All right, next is the billlet. Again, ask any questions, Mr. Me?
No.
Mr. Moritz?
No.
Mrs. Deschaux?
No.
All right, I will request, or I'll entertain a motion, I should say, requesting emergency legislation for the billlet.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Me, and a second by Mr. Moritz. Is there any discussion?
No.
If not, do a roll call, vote, Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschaux?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion carries. All right, next you have before you Proposed Resolution Number 238, Page 2024, which was sent back. And that discusses the pay rate of the council clerk. Discussion would be, is it at the 425 increase to the 2024 amount? Or the 425 increase to the 2025 amount, so?
How was it negotiated?
That it was in an extra dollar.
And now it's to bring her up to?
I think what he's asking compared it to what we did with the other employees.
Right, so Miranda's position was incredibly low back in 2021. I believe she's still, that position is still making less than the gallium clerk at that point. The extra dollar, we don't have much, but it was my understanding that it was a thank you.
No, I think she does a great job.
Mr. Me, do you have any questions or other comments?
I'd like to see it passed as with the extra dollar.
Mr. Me, any questions or comments? Mr. Moritz, I'm looking right at you. I got your back.
My concern is doing this, I think she needs it. My one concern is if we did do that to five, it might cause trouble down the road for other negotiations for something going down the road. As far as negotiations with other?
I don't see that being a problem. The Ask Me Unit signed off on it. They were totally for it.
Then I have no further discussion, I'm fine with it.
Mrs. Deschaux, any questions or comments?
No.
All right. Did we allow for that in the budget?
It's been a little bit, sorry. Yes, I believe I calculated at the percentage that was initially discussed.
So at this point, we need a motion one way or the other for?
I'd like to make a motion, I believe it as is.
All right, so the question I'm going to ask is, I don't have that one right in front of me. Was that written retroactive to January 1st, or do we have to change the wording?
It was retroactive.
Okay, yeah. So your motion is that?
We leave it as is.
Okay, are you asking for emergency or not emergency?
Just to say, Kaylee, a headache, I would say as an emergency.
So again, just to reiterate, your motion is requesting emergency legislation, putting Resolution 238, 2024, as written, back to a full council vote at the next meeting.
I don't think we should do it as emergency.
You just said that.
If we're making it retroactive, do we really need to do that as emergency?
I'm going to ask the auditor how that affects her job.
It doesn't affect my job, it affects Kim's job. So it doesn't bother me either way.
I think from what I understood, and when I spoke with Kim about it, the problem that makes is that she's going to get the initial pay rate, and then when that gets to the end of its third reading, and then 30 days later it becomes effective, then they have to pay her even more. And I think that affects her negatively on taxes as well.
I can see that.
So that's almost two months.
Yeah.
The change.
So I'll ask you to clarify your motion one way or the other, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, pass it as regular.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to pass it as regular legislation, putting 238 dash 2024 as originally written back to full council.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, I'll do a roll call, though. Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschaux?
No.
I'm a yes. Motion carries. All right, auditorless, are you the one that will discuss the contract with the auditor of state?
So we have, since I have been working for the city, we have always contracted with the auditor of state to do our gap conversion services. The, we have not had to pass a resolution or ordinance in a while. I think Miranda looked at the last time we did. It said 2011 was the last time we passed one, and it was for three years. On the engagement letter she'd sent me that Tommy and I both signed off on, there is a portion for a ordinance or resolution. So I'm bringing it to Committee to pass one, but it's just for one year for the gap conversion for year 2024.
Is there a dollar amount that needs to include in that?
I don't have that on, sorry.
Does that need to pass by any certain date?
It would need passed by the first meeting in January. She has to have it back by January 8th.
So that's our next meeting, and we need a dollar amount to request it in legislation.
Could we recess and I run and grab the letter really quickly?
You can go and get that, and we can go on to our next project, or next line item. We'll come back to that when you come back, if that's okay.
It's on good.
The next one was donations towards airport projects. I guess I'll wait for you, because I had a question for you on this one too, so we'll just.
Hey, Kaylee? On your way by, there's some water left over from the arbitration.
Okay, thank you.
Kaylee, Victor just pointed out that it does show it in the piece here, $36,750.
Yeah.
Okay, so if that's the case, we're requesting legislation authorizing them to enter into the contract with the auditor of state for the gap conversion services for a dollar amount of $36,750. And that's as an emergency, I'll request that.
That is also as a resolution of?
Yes. So do I hear a motion requesting that legislation as emergency?
I'll make a motion as it, been here too long today. As a resolution, emergency to pass that for one year.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Moritz, and a second by Mr. Me. Is there any discussion? If not, do a roll call, vote, Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschaux?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Okay, on the donations toward airport projects, the Airport Commission has already stated that they would work on forming a 51C3. I'm assuming at some point we will need a line item in the budget for any donations that come in. Are you wanting to do that now, or when they are ready to make any donations?
I would like to have further discussions with them first. We have funds for like fire donations, police donations. We could create a fund for airport donations as well. Thank you.
So we will leave that on our open projects, and you let me know when you're ready to discuss it. We won't need to put it on the agenda unless the auditor tells us that we're ready to discuss it. The next topic is the Bratwurst Festival Safety Forces and Cleanup Services. I spoke to the service director, he's not yet prepared to give that number. He says at our next meeting, hopefully, we'll have that. So we will table that and put that on the agenda for our next Finance Committee meeting. All right, Internet Auctions. We do have to request legislation in what this one, as we talked about the other night, we would request this for the calendar year 2025. And you have before you in your packet Resolution 211 dash 2021 as a reference.
Yeah.
And what this does is it authorizes the administration to dispose of items through internet auction. So we would just need a motion requesting legislation authorizing that.
I'll make a motion to request resolution to stating that the administration can hold that internet auction.
Second.
Is that as an emergency, Mr. Moritz, or?
As an emergency?
The legislation is, oh no, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm asking if your motion is requesting emergency legislation or regular legislation?
I don't think we're going to have to have an emergency deal with Tom.
It would be better, that way you're not waiting too much for them to?
Okay, as an emergency, though.
Okay. So your motion to clarify is requesting emergency legislation authorizing the administration to use internet auctions in calendar year 2025?
Yes.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Moritz, and a second by Mr. Me. Is there any further discussion? If not, do a roll call. Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschaux?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that motion carries. Mr. Me, is there any open projects you wish to discuss?
No, sir, not at this time.
Mr. Moritz?
No.
Mrs. Deschaux?
No.
Is there any public participation?
Great White 1125 Hillcrest Tribe. So I know there was a lot of numbers thrown out here tonight. So we are cutting certain projects in the budget for streets, sewers, water lines, correct? So, but then in turn, according to this ordinance for the pay raises, including the clerk, that we're going to spend $102,288 in raises for 2025. So if something happens to like a sewer interceptor, major water lines that maybe break over the winter time, are we going to have enough money to cover all this?
We do have, so there are some lines where, and they wouldn't necessarily be in here because they don't, they wouldn't have a large change, where we would have an amount of money for general contracted services or something like that.
So we don't have the money then? If some major breaks or four or five projects break over, we do or don't?
So we have a certain money in lines that aren't reserved. So for some of those lines I was talking about, for like outside contractors, there's extra money there, so like an extra $50,000 or something like that, in case something happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so my thing is this, and I'm going to point this out again. For the citizens that are listening, $102,288 in raises to city employees that do not work in the trenches, that aren't working out on the streets. Yet, we might be cutting the police department down to two guys per shift? Unrealistic. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
One thing I forgot to mention, that when I was a union steward, one of the things that the union begrudgingly did not care for, but during a budget issue and a staffing issue, one of the things I know they utilized were intermittent employees that weren't full union, believed their pay was considered different to stop the bleed when it came to like overtime. I don't know if that's something that can even be put into or just debated in the next contract. It's just something that I didn't know if it wasn't on the radar. I just would feel remiss not to mention it, so.
Any other public participation?
I won't touch it this time. Bob Taylor, 411 Plymouth. So as you're talking about legislation, and obviously there's still concern, Greg just brought up concern for laying off police department again. Just like the time you passed legisla, you guys, whoever, whoever was on council then. I just know you were there, right? Could you not pass minimum manpower? That would raise the minimum manpower for the police department to put those guys at?